Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Alariah. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecity.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the November 14th meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. Commissioner Williams has our dog from the kennel this morning. We have a very special treat. He's a cute, really cute one. Puppy.
I thought you were talking about me.
No, I was talking about the dog. Thank you.
Well, this is a special dog here. This is gonna be a dog that's gonna go fast on Friday. Look, puppy. Wants to play. Very happy, lovable, and it's gonna be available for adoption at 3 o'clock. The last dog that I wanted to adopt, someone got there at 10:00 a.m. from a different county to wait till 3 o'clock to adopt it. So, if you want this little guy here, make sure you get there early. Definitely worth it. Very energetic, playful, and please come out to our kennel and support all our dogs. Great dog would be a great present for someone.
Yes. He's fun.
Ready? Come on. Carry your leash. Good dog. Look at that.
At 9:45, we'll have a budget hearing from the Sheriff, 10:15 clerk courts, and 10:45 the Auditor's Office. Under Resolutions Number 1, Job and Family Services Bills?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Investments?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Advances and repayments?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Travel?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Bills?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Under the Commissioners' authorized various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdiction of Lorraine County Commissioners?
Mr. Cortez?
I do need a brief, hopefully a brief executive session to go over some potential hires at Job and Family Services and Golden Acres Nursing Home, and we also may discuss ongoing negotiations. Depends on what our times are after the budget hearings. Both of those topics are allowable under the Sunshine Law for executive session discussions. So whatever asks at the conclusion of our regular board meeting today, we go into executive session and we talk about those items. Thank you.
Thank you.
Approved waive the reading in the same of the County Commissioners' meeting minutes of November 7?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Authorized payment $1,000 each to Boyer &amp; Co., excuse me, Cool Home for Funerals, Lorraine for indigent veterans in accordance with the Ohio Revice Code 5901.25 for Milton T. Thomas II in Lorraine, Homer P. Nielsen Lorraine, and William L. Boyd in Neyland Lake.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Under Community Development, award contract to Firelands Electric, Lorraine, in the amount of $30,249 for the Joyce Hangs Community Center project. This was the only bid received on November 2nd and will be paid from the CDBG FY11 account. Issue notice proceed effective on or before November 14th and complete by December 31st. Authorized Administrator to notify the Auditor to release retained at completion of the project. City of Sheffield Lake will be responsible for any change resulting in need of additional funds.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Under Solid Waste, Men Resolution 11720 adopted November 9, 2011, approving contract with Environmental Recycling Group Bowling Green for operation of lamp and ballast collection and recycling program for 2012. Said amendment is to reflect the correct account number of fluorescent recycling fund.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Approve and enter a renewal contract with Environmental Recycling Group Bowling Green for the operation of lamp and ballast collection and the recycling program for 2013 to be paid from the fluorescent recycling fund account.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. Bailey, it's about a $5,400 savings I saw in the correspondence. Is that correct?
That's correct. We're fortunate now that we're large enough that we're no longer attracting aggregators of lamps and recycle bulbs. We're actually attracting processors to bid. We had three processors bid this last time, and this is significant savings for us compared to previous years.
Good. Thank you.
Question for you two for go forward. Our solid waste policy committee got canceled this week. Are we gonna need one before the end of the year?
That depends on the legislation.
Okay.
All right? That's where we're at right now.
Yeah, I'll be in Columbus on Friday, so I think it'll be one of our topics of conversation. So, thank you.
Reducing the districts?
Yeah.
Okay.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Approve and enter a renewal contract with Liberty Tire Recycling LLC, Minera, for scrap tire processing and recycling services for the 2013 to be paid from tires open dump account.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Did you have something you wanted? No?
No.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Approve and enter a renewal contract with RET3, JobCorp, E. Cleveland for e-scrap transportation and recycling services for 2013 to be paid from the e-scrap recycling services account.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
There's about a 20 cent, 20 percent reduction in cost from our previous contract, so this has been significant savings for the center again.
Great.
Is that because of our bidding process or because our bulb collection has been up so much?
No, it's not because of our process being up. It's because we convinced all bidders to supply boxes and pallets this last time around. This particular contract gives us 1,000 boxes and 1,000 pallets at no cost, and we reduced our cost per unit by 20 cents a pound.
Wow, beautiful.
Just like the bulbs, correct? That was the same reason for the reduction in savings?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Mr. Cortez, County Administrator?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I do have a couple of quick issues I need to bring that was late getting printed out into the board for the agenda. I'm gonna pass a couple of those down and ask the clerk to take a look at that resolution. It has to do with our NSP funds. Don, you, Don's here. Why don't you come up and?
Is that microphone working?
Oh.
I got it, Don. Go ahead.
Oh, okay. Hello?
Hang on a minute.
Yep. Okay. Yeah. Okay. Before you there, two resolutions that should end NSP 1 as far as, one, doing projects with Huron and Norwalk. Two, we're coming up at the end, we do have some funds left over, and we are working on two more demolitions in Sheffield Township to get completed as well, which would close out NSP. The two before you, one is actually an increase for a rehab that was previously approved, and they ran into a very large amount of lead-based paint that in order to rehab the house and make it safe for children, they need to eradicate the lead-based paint. That cost is $55,000. So, in order to complete the project, we would need to approve and authorize that expense for the developer to finish that in a timely manner. Both of these need to be done by December 31st.
Commissioners, I've added this, and it's just procedural housekeeping with getting these done under the requirements of the federal code. The reason I'm bringing them up from the floor is I was late getting them out of my email, or I would've passed them for the agenda earlier, so I apologize for that. Community Development forwarded these last week. But I would ask that you, did you approve these so we can get those funds expended? They've given us a very, very short period, very small turnaround to get everything done with this. Plus, you'll notice that there's more requirements on NSP than there is under our current land bank requirements for the demolition because of the origination of federal dollars. You know, that's where the dollars come from, so they're more stringent.
We have to oversee this property for, what, 10 years under NSP 1?
For the, if they were acquisition land bank, yes. Then they would be coming back to us to be able to dispose of property as well.
Okay.
You say eradicate the lead-based paint. Do they have to scrape it?
They'll actually be removing it, taking out window casings and things like that to make it safe. Typically, although I don't know, and I hate to say that, but I don't know all of it in this house, but with windows particularly, it's not so much the paint, but what it is is the old lead weights that were used to allow the windows to slide, and that is a huge cost of dust because it's rubbing inside that track. And that's normally where most of our lead-based issues actually are coming from, unless the paint were to be in bad condition. But because of the size of the house, the size of the rehab, any lead-based paint that was found, any lead-containing things that were found must be removed from the house to make it lead-safe.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Motion to approve, do we need to do these separately?
Yes, and we need to actually amend the original resolution, but I don't have it, so you'll have to give it to me. But we'll amend that to approve this.
Make a motion to amend, which one is that?
Do you want to do the hurrant, Huron County first?
Sure, we could do that. If that's not amendment, then that's just a motion to approve?
Amend Huron County.
No, we actually have to amend both of them.
Oh, we're amending both of them?
Amen to approve, yes.
For the Huron County, a motion to amend, to approve the Huron County NSP allocation by 55,000?
All right. Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
And then amend for the City of Norwalk NSP allocation by $60,825,000.
And approve, right.
Motion to approve.
Yes. Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Don. As a last comment, I want to send out a congratulations to Dr. Roy Church, who was inducted into the Business Hall of Fame last week, who was a great honor for Lorraine County and himself personally to bring the credibility to our region. He was a, he spoke well about Lorraine County and the many partnerships that allowed him to achieve success. As always, he's a very gracious and humble person when it comes to awards. It's well-deserved, and it speaks volumes to the things that are going on here. He is truly a representative of Lorraine County and Lorraine County Community College. And on top of that, he's celebrating his 25th anniversary of the college this year.
Oh, wow.
He's trying to keep that under the radar screen, so it's out. But it was a really great event. There was the who's who's, and we had a who's is who up there on the stage.
Nice.
So congratulations, and those are the end of my comments this morning. Thank you.
Mr. Inocent Assistant County Prosecutor?
Commissioners, I do have updates regarding one matter of pending court action and one matter of imminent court action.
Commissioner, if I may? Well, don't forget this Saturday in downtown Lorraine, they're having the pop-up shops. I think it's gonna be something that's gonna be really cool, something unique and new for downtown Lorraine, their businesses down there. And then the following Saturday, I'll be co-emceing the Light Up Lorraine Parade, so I'm looking forward to that. I think it's gonna be a lot of fun. That's the end of my report.
All right. Yeah, again, congratulations, Roy Church, and all the recipients. Great event for the Business Hall of Fame. Roy did a great job even recognizing the Board of County Commissioners. Also had Nowaka last Friday. It wasn't a real extensive agenda, but they did ask me to chair the nominating committee for next year's board, so I'll be working on that. Also attended the follow-the-fish kickoff at the Stocker Center on Monday evening. A fundraiser, Cleveland had their guitars. Lorraine County's looking to have fish. So Joan Perch and Paul Beaver and a whole group of people, Janet Garcia doing a great job leading that charge. Commissioner Williams and I, they attended the BASF kickoff. Great job, $50 million investment here in downtown Alariah. Mayor Brenda had kind words, Senator Sherrod Brown, and they had their executives here from New Jersey and Germany. Tended the Golden 30's last night. Congratulations to Mermaid's Tale and Synapse Biomedical for the two top Golden 30 county, 30 companies in a three-county region, Erie, Huron, and Lorraine County. Another great event. Nice working with all the partners. We got to present with Steve Maury from Team Lorraine County and Dr. Faricloth from JVS, and the students did a great job with handing out the awards, had two students from their high school. And happy Thanksgiving to everyone. That's the end of my report.
Yeah, no meeting next week.
No meeting next week.
Well, it's been a busy week. Just want to bring up on the, for the Light Up Lorraine, also stuff down at the Charleston Coffee House, a great facility down there.
Yes, it is.
Well, this week, Lorraine County should be proud. We have 25 additional jobs coming in through BASF that Mr. Kallo talked about with the improvements there. I want to give a special thank you to the governor and the state for working with them with their investment to improve that facility. It's great to see companies expanding here in Lorraine County. At the Golden 30's award, just another example of why we should be so proud of our county, the different businesses that are going through, working, expanding. We've had companies that actually doubled their base size, employee base size. It's a wonderful event. Want to thank the Lorraine Morning Journal and the Lorraine Community College for putting that on. Trying to think of what, oh, the Nowaka meeting. I was surprised, our commissioner was actually nominated to be the president of Nowaka.
No, not President Nowaka.
Well, President.
Chair of the nominating committee.
Correct.
I'll be moving up, though.
Right. And definitely hope that you will get that because I can see that improving our relationships with Nowaka for Lorraine County, so good luck with that, Mr. Kallo. And again, wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, a lot of events going on through Lorraine County. Make sure you get out and spend your dollars locally. Thank you.
November 20th, the land bank meeting has been canceled. November 21st, the Commissioners' meeting has been canceled. And then November 28th, Commissioners will meet two times that day, 9:30 that morning and 5:30 p.m. Board of Correspondents?
So moved. The reading be waived?
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
We'll do our budget hearing. Sheriff, go study.
Morning Commissioners?
Good morning.
Good morning, Sheriff.
I brought with me my secretary, Debbie Reinhardt, also my chief deputy, Dennis Cavanhall, my jail administrator and director of corrections, Jack Hammond, and captain of law enforcement division, Jim Drazdowski, in case you have any specific questions. I brought my backup with me, so. But, you know, I sent over yesterday, and as you know, we sent our budget over originally at the end of May, and I know you had those figures through Lisa Hobart, the budget director. But I did send you over a report last night. I don't know if you had a chance to look it over, but I guess for the sake of the audience that is here, I'd like to read it real fast if I could. As you are aware, in 2008, the sheriff's office general fund budget was approximately 6.3 million. In 2009, this budget was reduced by approximately 20 percent to 5.2 million. This then resulted in the layoffs of 20 deputies. In 2010, because of funding shortfalls, I also laid off from the general fund one captain. Since December of 2011, we have merged the Lorraine County Sheriff's Office, eight dispatchers, and one supervisor with the Emergency 911 Center for future efficiency and a cost-saving measure of over $400,000 to the county's general fund. Through this cost savings, we were also able to bring back three laid-off deputies for law enforcement duties. Combining these dispatch centers also saved the general fund the cost of upgrading the sheriff's office dispatch radio consoles from analog to digital, which is a federal requirement by 2013 to be P-25 compliant. We have been lucky enough to have applied for and received congressional earmarks in the past few years to update all of our portable radios and our mobile radios in our vehicles to be P-25 compliant, which has saved the county over $350,000. The 2012 general fund budget I received was $4,841,049.1, which results in savings to the general fund of over $405,000. The 2013 general fund budget I am requesting is $4,954,812. The increase is due to increased vehicle expenses due to an ever-increasing aging fleet and the cost of the repairs to repair these vehicles, and then also the increase in the cost of gas. Also, due to many mandated duties of a sheriff's office, I can only put out 20 law enforcement deputies to answer the many law enforcement duties throughout the 357 square miles that we are responsible for. As you also know, when you divide up these officers for the 24 hours a day, seven days a week, with days off, vacations, and other leaves, that only leaves approximately three officers per shift. This is totally inadequate for the duties and responsibilities that we perform day in and day out. The Office of Sheriff is one of the oldest law enforcement agencies in the state of Ohio, having served in Ohio since 1788. Since this county's existence, I believe that most people, this country's existence, I believe that most people of the United States of America believe that a basic function of government is to provide law and order in our society. I understand the fiscal concerns that have come about because of the economy, but maintaining safety and security in this day and age must be at the top of your priority list. Under the Ohio Revice Code, Section 33, which is general provisions, the sheriff has duties and responsibilities under 29 of these provisions and titles, and also are mentioned in 1027 specific Ohio Revice Code references. If the sheriffs weren't responsible for law enforcement duties under these laws, then why would the state legislators who wrote these laws have mentioned them in all these specific sections? A primary duty of a sheriff is to provide the public peace, and this takes deputies to accomplish. As I believe you are aware, we are the sole police protection for the 18 townships located in this county, which span 357 square miles of this 495 square mile county. For the past four years, I have instituted a no overtime policy unless it's an emergency situation to save monies. The cost of gasoline has also impacted our budgets, with the price reaches close to $4, which we have had to absorb. Due to not buying any replacement vehicles for the past five years, the aging of our fleet of vehicles due to wear and tear, auto accidents, and other issues, I'm requesting the purchase of four vehicles and needed equipment at a cost of approximately $124,000. This is not in the budget, and you've never placed vehicle replacements into the budget. I must also remind you that some of these vehicles now in use have very high mileage on them and are going to be unsafe to operate, placing deputies and citizens in danger. And I also included a report by Captain Jim Drazdowski about the condition of the fleet. You're also aware that the contracts that have been negotiated with the four bargaining units at the sheriff's office have frozen their pay for three years now with no raises for any of those years. Under the jail fund, we've also made cuts in the jail budget and went from 103 corrections officers to 98 officers through attrition and have not replaced these officers. We are a direct supervision type of a jail, as the original facility was built in 1977, and we have added on in 1998 and can hold up to 422 inmates. It takes so many officers to man each post for the safety of the residents and the employees. We have been dangerously low on manpower in the jail on many occasions due to injuries of employees during the course of their work with days off, vacations, and other leaves. I have also instituted an overtime policy in the jail unless it's an emergency. You are also aware that we have opened the Alariah City Jail Annex, where we are presently holding our female population of inmates. This has worked out very well with the Alariah Police Department and the city of Alariah by also opening up 60 beds at the Lorraine County Sheriff's Office for male inmates, which increases our jail capacity to 476 inmates. I'm not asking for any additional personnel in the jail, but do need to maintain the current level of staff to be able to operate safely. The director of corrections is Captain Jack Hammond, and the entire staff have done a great job in controlling the costs of these services, such as maintenance, food costs, medical costs for the inmates, and other issues. But we cannot control some of these costs as vendors raise their prices and as medical issues arise. We do shop around and get at least three coats when we're purchasing items. For the 2013 jail budget, I'm asking for $12,807,200, which is due to increases in healthcare costs for the employees, increased longevity pay, and step increases for employees, along with the increases in gas and jail vehicle expenses for the transport vehicles. As you are aware, the county jail is funded mostly by a quarter percent sales tax. I believe that the quarter percent sales tax will bring in roughly over $8 million for 2012. Once again, I must reiterate that we never close. The people here do not come in at 8:00 and go home at 5:00 and shut the lights off and shut the building down. Deputies must answer calls for service and help. Corrections officers must guard inmates and keep order. Personnel at the sheriff's office must be on duty 24 hours a day, seven days a week. The building that we're in obviously ages three days to one versus other facilities because of things running constantly. This is one reason why this office costs more to operate than others. We also understand the economic conditions and attempt to control costs where we can. We currently have 231 employees at the sheriff's office. Prior to 2008, we had 261. We are down 30 employees, which is roughly an 11 percent reduction in staff through cutbacks, consolidations, and attrition. In conclusion, we at the sheriff's office have attempted to be as cost-effective as possible in preparing our budget requests. Our needs are many as we serve all citizens throughout Lorraine County, but the services which are supplied are very important for the safety and security of the community. I believe that the requests are reasonable, legitimate, and necessary for the safe operation of the sheriff's office. Your consideration of these requests is appreciated, and should you have any questions, please ask me. Now, I did want to also add a couple of things here. As you know, we're also responsible for serving over 2,600 warrants that we have in file right now, tracking over 700 sexual offenders that are in Lorraine County. And we've issued, since the carrying concealed weapons permit law is passed in 2004, we've issued over 7,000 licenses. And one thing that I'm sorry to report is that the foreclosures unfortunately for 2012 And one thing that I'm sorry to report is that the foreclosures unfortunately for 2012 are going to be up probably about 400. We had 1,200 in 2011, and we're shooting probably for around 1,700 or close to that for this year, and we hope that goes down again for next year. And I do want to report because of the changes in PERS laws, that I'm sure that I'm probably going to have around six people that probably are going to retire out of the jail. Now, as you know, when they retire out of the general fund, that money gets replaced. When they retire out of the jail, we just have to absorb those costs because it does not get replaced. But I just want to make you aware, as you know, there's payoffs for sick leave, vacation, and other items that, you know, if you have six people leave, nobody's actually put in their retirement papers yet, but I hear a lot of rumors that a lot of them are going to do it before the 31st of December.
Sure. Any idea, did you put a rough number on what that's going to be, the payout numbers? Jack?
We have not yet. I can get that figure for you.
But we really do replenish that to the jail because we supplement the jail. So if there's more costs, we're just going to put more supplement.
Yeah, I just wanted to make you aware, Jim.
Yeah, it just comes from a different account on our side of the house, but a lot of people don't know that we track that separately, and we just add it to those accounts because it's not built into their payroll accounts, but it is a big number.
Yeah.
Well, Sheriff, you always do a great job with your budget, and you've got a wonderful team. I appreciate everything you guys do as far as keeping the numbers down. For the general fund, you're asking roughly $100,000 more, correct?
Yes, I think it's about $113,000.
You need an additional $124,000 for the four vehicles?
That's correct.
Okay.
Sheriff, if I can go back, just so you can explain, so anybody looking at this, as we talk about the salary 9%, we were up here before talking, that covers, because that's, you've cut everything else back, but that's one of the major increases, about $143,000 difference. But that's longevity, overtime, and the PRS you referenced, correct, all in?
That's correct.
Now, with the six correction officers, which will be the jail side, do you have a figure in here for replacing those guys if they go? I mean, for next year's jail budget, which is going to be up, and when they hire in there a lower rate of pay, correct?
Correct.
What's it, two or three years before they hit the maximum pay as a corrections officer? Would that reflect that in this budget, or would that give some additional dollars if needed for like medical fund fees? As we talked about Vincent Jackson, those bills aren't through yet.
I think, would they figure those rates? Do they figure them at a three-year rate? Yes.
Okay.
So it is on the high end, you're right.
Okay, all right, so we're covered on that side there. We wouldn't have additional.
And as you know, we had that Vincent Jackson who had the stroke that was in, you know, for almost two months. Exactly, we're starting to slowly get those bills to trickle.
Do we have an idea yet, over 100?
Last bill came in at $34,000. I don't have the totals.
No totals yet?
We're figuring at least $100,000 or more.
So that will probably roll into next year's money going, not this year's money. Okay. Sheriff, Mike Doherty did a nice job, he's got to figure out where all the money's at.
Lisa, I don't know if this is for you, or the sheriff might know, but this, the 2012 budget number that we're showing here, that 4.8 million, does that include the additional money that was given to the sheriff's office at the end of last year to bring back those three deputies? When we merged 911 and the sheriff's?
Well, what we did, what we did with that is, we just changed the allocation in the general fund. They retained a certain percentage from, in the salary accounts, and we just reduced the salary accounts by agreed-upon proportion.
400 grand?
Right.
Roughly 400,000 is how we did the reduction, and we left the rest to pay for the new deputies, the three deputies. Instead of taking the whole 700,000, we only took 400,000.
Right, so we just changed some of the accounting. It was, so there was really no...
There is no adding to the budget for that?
The, and hopefully, we're going to have some more discussions about some potential savings next year that we're set up to... Looking forward to those discussions, so I, you know, we're going to try to produce a little bit more efficiency for some issues, and that may help us get some more deputies on the road, and we'll be talking about that more after we go through a few points, but we're having discussions already.
Yep, I agree.
Appreciate that partnership as well, and your willingness to work with the board. So, you have my support with this. I think it's a fair and respectful budget. Thank you so much.
Just unfortunate that the police district didn't pass this time around. Hopefully, we'll try it again, and it will, because we do need more guys on the road. There's no doubt about it.
Well, Commissioner, I also want to congratulate the sheriff on managing that medical claim that was getting way up there in costs for, we had, maybe you remember, we were getting daily reports from the jail about the accelerating medical cost, and you guys did just about everything possible to mitigate those costs, and I think Jack was working on that for you, I don't...
Yeah, he was.
So that really held down what could have been even significantly more expenditures, but I don't think the public recognizes that the sheriff's responsible for the health care of those inmates when they're in the jail, and if they have a catastrophic event, guess what?
We pay.
And we worked closely with the prosecutor's office to address that issue, and also with the judges, and, because they knew what the issue was, the longer this guy stays in, the more it's going to cost the county.
I know Judge Maroli was working at it hard, trying to find a place to put that gentleman.
Yeah, you guys do a great job. Appreciate all you do.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, next on the list is...
Clerk of Courts, Ron Nabokowski. Is he coming?
I'm not on.
I know you're not. You don't look like Ron.
Is he coming, or you're doing it for him?
He is under weather today.
Okay.
I apologize, I found out at 9:15.
Lucky you, huh?
Wow, 9:15. Not much time.
Not much time at all.
Kimon has PowerPoints.
Well, you are definitely more pleasant to deal with, so thank you for coming.
Do you have one for me? Do you have one for me?
I, oh, I do. I walked off with it, sorry about that.
Do you have your PowerPoint plugged in?
I don't. I'm not sure what I do.
Did you bring it? Did you send it?
I didn't. As I said, I'm not super prepared here.
You only knew 15 minutes before, that's fine.
Do you have it electronically with you?
I don't have it electronically with me, I'm sorry.
Put it on the screen, though? We've got that scanner.
We may be able to, you can't, it doesn't read very well off the scanner, we can try, but I don't have anybody here that's going to set that up, unless Teresa can set it up.
I don't think it's on.
Neil, do you know how to set that up? The overhead?
It might be locked. I can read it. I don't want to cause trouble. Good luck, Teresa.
I've got a hammer.
Push the on button. There you go.
How many people did take the terminal?
It's childproofed.
I just turned the document reader on.
I see you, Teresa.
You got to flip it. There you go.
There you go.
I'm going to just copy back, though, so that I can put it on there if you don't mind.
This got YouTube written all over it.
Yeah. That's funny.
Now you got the document.
She's getting it.
You're going to have to focus, you got to adjust it when she puts it down.
Maybe I just did a...
There you go, perfect. You guys are good. See, he's clapping, hell's clapping back there.
Normally, it takes Ernie like 20 minutes, so good job, Teresa.
He needs a big buck tonight.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for this opportunity to address you. My name is Kate Lenz, and I'm the staff attorney for the Clerk of Courts office. Mr. Nabokowski is under the weather today, so he was unable to be here, but I know that he wanted to. I will probably not do, say exactly what he wanted to say, and if that is the case, he will probably send you some communications to provide you with additional information. I wanted to take the opportunity to give you some information about what we have done this year. It's been a busy year in the clerk's office. One of the big initiatives that we started this year was to partner with the Ohio Attorney General's Office to receive and process state tax liens electronically. That has saved a lot of time and a lot of money in our office because we are not shuffling the paper around that we used to do. It is not uncommon for the Attorney General's Office to send us hundreds of state tax liens in one week, and being able to process those electronically has been very beneficial. We have also developed and updated a comprehensive records management and retention program. Our prior retention schedule was very out of date and did not address all of the issues that we had, and we were creating a huge backlog of files and documents in the records center. We have been able to reduce that, and that gives us the ability to be able to clean out our records more in our records department and send things over to the records center, so that has made us more efficient as well. We've also contracted with the Ohio Attorney General's Office to collect delinquent court costs, fines, fees, and restitution. That initiative began in April of this year and has been very successful for us. Unlike traditional collections agencies, the Ohio Attorney General's Office has the ability to intersect tax refunds, lottery winnings, things of that nature, and so we have been able to collect more as a result of that partnership. We are also involved in the process of reevaluating our banking services. We've obtained some bids, and some of them look very promising. We are exploring that right now, and we hope to be able to reduce our monthly fees as a result of that. We have initiated a 24/7 online bill payment process for criminal and domestic relations cases. That began also in late spring of this year. Individuals that would like to make a payment but can't do so during our traditional office hours can log in on the internet and make a payment. There is a convenience fee attached. This is at no cost to the county, the convenience fee pays our vendor for the service, and we have been able to increase collections on those cases as well. We've also created an electronic application to be able to scroll judicial schedules on monitors at the Justice Center. This has not been deployed, but it hopefully will be in the next few months, and that will allow us to not print paper schedules anymore and post those every day, which has been a huge waste of consumables. We have streamlined docketing procedures for our deputy clerks across all of our departments, and we have collaborated with the Court of Appeals in Akron this year to be able to scan and send motions and appellate briefs filed locally via email, and that has been a tremendous savings for us on postage, because what happens when individuals file things here in the Lorraine County Court of Appeals, we have to package all of those items up and mail them to Akron. So not having to do that anymore has been a huge savings for us. The budget figures that I have for you today are pretty much what we submitted in May of this year. This is the budget that Mr. Nabokowski submitted in May. We believe that it is, it would allow us the ability to bring on an additional deputy clerk. We have had some extended medical absences in this past year. We have lost individuals, and those individuals have not been replaced. It has been very difficult to get work done. As you know, we have non-public office hours where we are only open to the court, and we are not open to attorneys and to the members of the public, and that has been a big barrier for folks to be able to access the courts. It's Ron's intention that if we do receive this budget, that he would be able to hire an additional person, and that we would look at eliminating those non-public office hours in 2013.
Well, looking at this, the, from the sheet that I have, you're going from $656,000 to $926,000, so a $270,000 increase, and you're only going to hire one employee?
It's, it actually looks worse than it is. We receive foreclosure funds from the court every year, and the budget needs factors in that money that we receive from the court. The next page is our actual budget request to the commissioners.
It's 200,000 less.
So this would represent about a 9% increase. Did you have a question? I'm sorry.
Just looking at the one, when I saw the 270, you're saying you're hiring an employee.
I recognize that it's confusing. We wanted to show what our total needs were, and then show you the budget requests that we are asking for on the next slide.
So the 726 is with the one employee.
That is correct, yes.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
About $95,000 more.
That is correct. The slide represents what we are asking for in appropriation for the Clerk computerization fund. This is significantly higher than the appropriation for this year. We are hopeful that in 20,000, or 2013, that we will be able to purchase some new technology, perhaps some additional functionality in the current case management system so that we can do things more efficiently.
Well, this is your special funds, though, right?
That is correct, yes.
This has nothing to do with us appropriating.
Right, that is correct.
I have a question, and I see Tim Louie in the back. Is this, Tim, you can just shake your head or come up if you want, is this also part of the program that you're working on, the funds that you... Very good. He's shaking his head yes, so.
Yes.
Thank you.
The next slide shows the title, Division Budget Requests that we are asking for. There are really no significant surprises here, other than furniture and fixtures is a little bit higher. It is Ron's intention to move the Amherst location at some point in 2013, and I think that that's the reason why the furniture and fixtures budget's...
You said move the location?
Potentially, yes.
Is the lease running out? Because that lease is actually, the commissioners are in charge of that part of it.
Right, that is correct. He can talk to you more about that, I know that he would like to do that.
Does the visitor bureau know, or did you just shock them?
No, I don't think I shocked them.
Okay.
I don't think they, last, I sit on that board, and that hasn't been discussed.
Okay. I've spoken with Barb, so...
Okay.
Just to give you some additional information about the office, there's been a 72% increase in the garnishment receipts processed by our office since 2007.
Did you have a sheet for that?
I don't.
You don't?
These are just some points that we wanted to make. We are permitted statutorily to keep 2% poundage for processing those payments, so we are essentially acting as a collections agency for banks, credit card companies, and a host of other organizations. In all of 2005, we issued 4,070 judgment liens, and the first 10 months of 2012, we've issued 6,488 judgment liens. This, last year, we filed 442 domestic violence protection orders. So far this year, we have filed over 400, it's about 415. We received no money for those cases, but of course, they are required to be processed. And orders to seal criminal records, what are commonly called expungements, have increased 81% from 2007 to 2011, which is the last full year that we have figures for. The general fund receives $20 for each of those petitions that's filed unless an individual is indigent, and the cost for our office to process one petition is well over $100 in postage for the certified copies of the orders that must be sent to all of the agencies. The $50 fee for expungements is statutory, and again, the general fund receives $20 from that $50. The rest of it goes to the state. And along with that, most of the money that the clerk's office collects does not go to the general fund, unfortunately. In the first three quarters of 2012, our total case receipts were about $5,84,530. Of that amount, we paid $710,675 into the general fund. That would be licenses, permits, fees, fines, and forfeitures and interest. Only 14% of what we have collected this year has actually gone into the general fund. The rest is obligated to go to state, to the state, victims, law enforcement, other courts, et cetera. All of these duties are mandated by statute or by the court. We have to do these things, and unfortunately, the money is just not coming into the general fund. But we hope that you will be supportive of our efforts to serve the public, to serve the court, to serve the bar, and if you have any questions that I can answer, I'd be happy to do so.
It's not as bad as I thought it was going to be, because that second page that showed the foreclosure money coming from a different source, so...
I'm sorry to shock you.
I was ready to just get mad at you, but not now.
She was mad this morning.
Was mad this morning.
She was mad.
Okay.
I'm good now.
All right.
You might have a cookie or anything.
Yeah, I didn't even eat anything.
Any questions?
Thank you, for me, thank you for coming.
Thank you, I appreciate you.
You did a good job, especially with 15 minutes to prepare, so...
Um, moving on. Auditor Craig Snodgrass?
Deputy Dog.
Wow.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning. I know Lisa has given you our budget request, it was the same one we submitted back in May. It's pretty much the same thing that we had, actually, in 2012. Certainly not a wish list. I know from the last couple of weeks, listening to a lot of different departments, I think people have been pretty realistic about the request, and I do believe ours is fair. I certainly would like to have more, since this budget's about $400,000 less than what we had in 2008, about 22% reduction. Again, I think we've also heard from our many departments about expenses. Also, on the auditor side, though, we are also looking at revenues, and I think this might be also a good opportunity for us to talk a little bit on the revenue side, which is not spend, but we are getting some revenues in. Things are looking up.
Can you speak up, Craig? I can barely hear you.
I'm sorry. Things are looking up as far as the economy. We're seeing an uptick, a lot of additional work coming through our office through transfers, conveyances. Conveyance fees are up. We've also looked at, recorders' fees are up, and I think we're going to hit, well, we will hit a record sales tax year. We're going to collect over $16 million. Again, that's a lot of good news. A lot of things that I think we've been doing, through the board's been doing, through attracting business and cuts and so forth, we've been able to raise revenues. Unfortunately, we keep getting hit from the state, and I know, Mr. Williams, you did mention, compliment the state about some business components earlier, but unfortunately, we are going to be down more than $2.2 million in local government, money's from 2011 collections to next year's projection, and it's about $800,000 from this year to next year. Those are things beyond our control, and I do want to compliment Commissioner Kalo, I know he's been down there in Columbus advocating to get our money back. Unfortunately, I keep staying in Columbus, and hopefully, we can...
It's only 1% of their general budget, though, and with that, not to get into it, just talking with these... into, just talking with the state senator yesterday, it's one percent of their general fund, so, the money that we're trying to get back, you know, it sounds like a lot of money, four hundred and ninety million dollars, but when you look at their entire budget, and even Sheriff Brown did compliment the state on being ranked number one or number two in job growth, so I think you're right, we are moving forward.
I'd like to bring two million dollars back to this county, because we could do a lot of good things with that.
Absolutely.
Their roads look nice down there.
Yeah, they do.
Yes. Again, so, I think, you know, there are things looking, and we are looking up, as you know, we also just are going through a reappraisal, we're finishing that up, very busy time in our office right now, as we're trying to wrap up year-end, working with the budget department and other departments, getting things taken care of there, getting ready for next year. We're also getting ready for our audit, we're going to be meeting with the state auditors here real soon to kick off the audit, as well as, well, with the wrap-up of the reappraisal, now the taxpayers will start to get their tax bills in January, that's when we're really going to see a large influx of people coming into our door, looking at their values a little more closely. We've had a roadshow the last few weeks, tried to take it out to the public, we have it on our website, you can check your value, see if you believe it's fair or not, again, it always comes back, though, still to the tax bill, and the voters were very kind in general to the people this year, you know, we had a couple of issues, many school issues passed, that's going to hit their tax bill, and although the values may have gone down, their tax bill may not necessarily go down the same, or in some cases, might even go up. So it's going to be very busy in our office, first part of the year, people will be coming in, we're getting ready for all that. Also, dog license, I, and I think this is a good segue for that, obviously with your weekly dog show, we have, we're getting ready to send out the mailers for this current year, it's a little scaled-down mailer, and we're trying to save money, I think we're going to probably save at least fifteen hundred dollars in just those costs for printing costs, postage costs, so then we can actually put the, the money towards the dogs, you know, towards the animals, as opposed to administrative costs, and we're looking for ways for that. We're pushing more people onto our internet site to actually apply for their dogs, which again, is a savings to the county and to the taxpayers, so we're looking for ways in our office to do that, and that's how we've been able to survive a lot of these cuts over the years. At some point in time, you're really cutting into the bone, but we're going to make do, and I think, like I said, I think our request here has at least been realistic.
I've got a couple of questions, Craig, actually, when you talk about the property valuation, lorrainecounty.com has a perfect one, if you go to our homepage, lorrainecounty.com, just punch it up and referring people there, and they've been asking me about this, so...
Yes, we've been working with Mr. Schimmon very closely, he, he's kind of our, our host site there, and they go to lorrainecounty.com, and it'll actually take them to our site, so they can either go through lorrainecounty.com or the auditor's website.
Question for you, when are we going to have our final numbers, do you think, for us to do our budget, actually?
I spoke to...
The end of November, first week of December, because I mean, we have till December nineteenth probably to approve the budget, but we'd like to know.
I spoke with Lisa a little bit yesterday at our Budget Commission meeting, and they're due in Columbus by November thirtieth. We're very close to having things wrapped up, it's just some tweaking, it will be about an eight hundred thousand dollar loss, again, to the county based upon values, I think right now, we're about eight point two percent drop in value overall, obviously, some areas are a little greater than others, so we'll be, we're very close, and we did, we should have something by, the state has to have some, they have to approve our values as well. We have a Budget Commission meeting set for December third to set emergency and bond rates, so we know we'll have something by then.
Okay, so December third, the latest for our final numbers?
I would say so.
To figure out our budget and let the department know what's going on?
Yes.
The closer it gets to the nineteenth, the less comfortable it is for everybody.
Right, we're, we're close, and again, there's just a couple of areas that we want to really take a little closer look at.
I'm looking, last year to this year, looked like an increase of about seventy-eight thousand, six hundred and some dollars.
About eighteen thousand.
No, about seventy-eight thousand.
Is, I don't know what...
That's the thing, your request.
There's an extra set of salary items?
Oh, is that, I'm sorry, is that included, the Budget, Budget Commission request as well?
Yes.
Well, I don't know, there's a set, a set, before, there was one, two, three, four...
Two hundred, this is...
This one, right here?
Yeah, that's...
Okay, yeah, forty-four thousand, nine hundred and ninety.
That's budget.
All this together?
This is Homestead, and then you've got a data.
Okay. The Budget Commission...
The Budget Commission has never been funded.
The Budget Commission has always been funded by your department.
We've been able to carry the water for the Budget Commission for a long time, and again, I know that's...
For like thirty years, twenty years, how, how long have you been...
I've been here eighteen years, and, and we've pretty much been able to do that. We had a printer, in fact, and I know, you know, Jerry and I, we've talked about it, and I think with the board, that there are necessary expenses that are supposed to be carried by the county commissioners, and that was why we have that request, we had a printer, actually, that was doing the Budget Commission work, held together by duct tape, it died. It's not in our budget, so that is part of the request, I, I was looking at some old documents, this goes back to, I know, even 2003, 2004, I remember seeing letters that we sent to, I think, John Roca see at the time, asking for a budgetary request, and it's never been funded.
Obviously, way back when you first started handling the Budget Commission, that money was probably given to you at that time, I mean, it, what, nothing's changed, I'm not sure why you're trying to make a change and put that off into another...
Well, our budget's down four hundred, our budget's down four hundred thousand dollars since 2008, cuts had to go somewhere, and it's been mostly in personnel.
Well, we offset some of it with the tax, or the tax map, and then we did the Board of Revision, and we, we've been able to curtail some of those cuts for you, but...
Right, because it would have been worse, it would be greater than twenty-two percent, it would be greater than four hundred thousand dollars, but then we also assumed the duties of the tax map department, we also assumed the duties of the Board of Revision, so we've been able to save the general fund, it's been a mutual, you know, good working relationship there, that we've been able to save the general fund, so you can use those monies elsewhere, and then we've also been able to absorb some of those other costs.
There's one item, actually ran into Brett Schuster, who works for you, when I was having dinner with my children, and he came up to me, brought up a vehicle, a truck, looking at your, your budget request, I don't see anything for a vehicle, that's because you would like to get the vehicle returned, correct?
Well, I guess there's a number of options.
Right.
One is, we had a truck we purchased probably ten, twelve years ago, maybe, many miles on it, because this is a big county, it just started to nickel and dime, nickel and dime, and actually, it was said it was unsafe, so we turned the truck in, I guess since that point in time, it's now been fixed, I'm not sure, you know, by whom, county engineer, I'm not sure, but I, I know it is here. That was the primary truck that we used to go out and test a lot of the gas, gas pumps, because we need an open-air vehicle, because I know there was a suggestion a number of years ago about, well, can't we just use a van? I don't think OSHA would appreciate that.
Well, I think yesterday, I spoke to Mr. Curtis about that, because Mr. Schuster's sent a seventh request, copying and so on.
I thought you brought up a week or two.
So, I guess...
The vehicle? I told you what I, what I did. I haven't figured out why my direction hasn't...
Okay, so you just got to go back over to Brett, I think the board's basically agreed it's going to go back to you guys.
I...
I gave the direction for this to be resolved a few weeks ago. First I heard that it wasn't, was when you spoke to me.
Yesterday, because I just saw a seventh request.
Right, so I, I, I had indicated that, that, that the vehicle issue was to be worked out, and I didn't care how it was worked out, with a different vehicle or that vehicle, but I was a little surprised to find out it hadn't, and I, I have not dealt with it since I talked to Commissioner Kalo yesterday.
It's coming back.
No, it's on its way.
That's something, all right, and you're going to be able to take care of?
Oh, I thought it was, so I can certainly...
The only reason I brought that up, Craig, is I wanted to make sure if, if it wasn't taken care of, that if you wanted to add that in there for a vehicle, that's all.
We'll be glad to take...
It's going to need to get approved, though, you can add it if you'd like.
Well, you can add it, but they do need a vehicle, and Mr. Schuster was very respectful, and made a lot of good points on why he needs that vehicle, so, I told him I would bring it up, and just let him know I did.
Thank you. Anything else? Thank you, Commissioner.
Thanks for coming in. That's it?
We're at public comment.
Okay. We're at public comment, anybody wishing to come up and speak to the commissioners about any subject?
I don't think there's anyone in the public.
Time to do that is now. Seeing none, I move we go into executive session as outlined by both the county administrator and the assistant county prosecutor.
All right, second.
Skoski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Kalo.
Aye.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' general meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at nine thirty at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, fourth floor, downtown Aliria. These are public meetings, and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda for a printable